Turn my phone down, Mayor.
Good evening, everyone. This is the City of Dania Beach Regular Meeting on May 27, 2025. It is 6:00 PM and I call this meeting to order. City Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Davis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Salvino.
Here.
Commissioner Lawland.
Here.
Commissioner Romoli.
Here.
Commissioner Ryan.
Here.
City Attorney Bootsis.
Here.
City Manager Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Yavacorm.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. If everyone would please bow your heads for a moment of silence. Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Eve, if you would please read our Statement of Decorum.
Yes, ma'am. No individual shall make any slanderous or unduly repetitive remarks or engage in any other form of behavior that disrupts or impedes the orderly conduct of the meeting as determined by the mayor. No individual may speak directly to or address the mayor, city commissioner, or city staff. Comments are to be only directed at the commission as a whole. No clapping, applauding, heckling, or verbal outbursts in support of or opposition to a speaker or his or her remarks shall be permitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve. Next up, we have presentation and special event approvals. We have Item 3.1, Special Event Applications for the Marine 84 Bike Night and TNT Neptune Fireworks Sale. Do I have consensus from the commission? Do we need a presentation? We're good? Consensus from the commission?
All good.
All right, we have consensus for the special event and approvals. Next, we're moving on to Item 3.2, Request for Proclamation Approvals. There are two by me. Request for proclamation approval for National Poppy Day on May 23, 2025, and request for proclamation approval of American Legion Post 304, the auxiliary 75th anniversary that will be held this Saturday, May 31, 2025. Do I have approval or consensus for approval for the proclamations?
Yes, Mayor.
I have consensus. Thank you, Commission. We do not have any proclamations this evening, so we will move on to our administrative reports. Madam City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, city team, residents that are here, and those residents that are watching at home. Very, very exciting information to share. First, I wanted to thank Commissioner Ryan. Couple of weeks ago, he called me and he said, "I know it's last minute, but I think that we can win this." And, long story short, I called Cassie and I called Nanette. It was to enter the School Partnership Award, and there were already 10 other submissions. We were the number 11 to come in. At the last minute, we put it together because we do things not to get recognition, we do things because it's the right thing to do. It's about relationships and partnerships, Mayor. As I know you're nodding your head, it's something that I've discussed with each and every one of you. Long story short, we ended up winning the Broward County Schools Partner of the Year. So, thank you to all of you. Thank you for challenging us, Commissioner Ryan, and we put that together, Nanette and Suzette, within an hour and a half, right? But, yes, very, very exciting. And then last week, I get an email from Director Norena that we got another amazing award. And this started when we passed our first ordinance for art in public places. And the baton was passed from, you know, the everything that we did to bring that legislation, your unanimous support on that, then putting the board together, working very closely with the mayor, working very closely with Eleanor, with Corinne. So, out of 300 submissions from 35 states, the 2025 National Mural Awards Competition, we got the gold medal for the beautiful mural that's standing right out here with the big panther. And the pan just...
Just... Oh, my God.
Just...
Wow.
Amazing. I mean, this is big time competition, 35 states, 300 submissions. We were number one in the region, and the region includes Florida, Kentucky, Tennessee, North Carolina, South Carolina, Louisiana, Alabama, Georgia, and Puerto Rico. So, on the national level, we got the bronze, but in the regional level, we got the gold. And this is just an amazing recognition. So, we're very, very, very excited about that. Yes, absolutely. Yes.
Oh, sorry. Appreciate it. I think that's actually a good omen as well for the hockey team that's playing right now.
Do it, let's do it.
Thought I'd throw that out there.
But, so much of what we do is such a total team level. We have your strategic, your amended new strategic master plan here as well, and we're very, very excited about that. And moving forward, continuing to have your vision and your priorities front and center. So, the City of Dania Beach invested $50,000 and partnered with the Visit Fort Lauderdale Co-op on a marketing campaign, and the campaign ran in the summer and fall of 2023. And I did bring a brief presentation to the City Commission in March of 2024 via the manager's report. So, I've included it for your perusal, exactly everything that occurred. Dania Beach, the partnership, the overall campaign over delivered resulting in over 1.3 million bonus impressions and over 63% in positive value benefits. $81,555 versus Dania Beach initial investment of $50,000. So, projected delivery was over $4,027,000 and achieved delivery of up to $5,405,000. So, a lot of key contacts, we were able to really cast a very, very wide net. Clear channel, outdoor billboards, West Palm Beach, Miami, Orlando, and Tampa, June through August. The value versus the impressions was truly amazing. The video with premium streamlined channels as presented in Dania Beach to receive approximately 350,000 impressions between June and August. Now, from June through August, we had 91,308 impressions. Bottom line, New York Times, Far Magazine, it was a really good return on our investment. And what I'm going to be doing is bringing forward the difference between the last six years, where we're at in social media, where we're at with the initiatives that we're using for communication, whether it's Mayor on the Move or our newsletter, we're really casting a wide net on information. But this was a really good partnership. I also wanted to let you know that we have invested an unprecedented amount of monies and resources in public safety because that is a top priority of our commission in this administration. So, I've been asked about what a day and night in Dania Beach looks like. It's very, very important that you know that not only that we have a great police department, but that we have a police department that is there 24/7. So, Captain Turala and I got together, and what he did was put together what I'd say a Thursday would look like. So, our day shift is one patrol lieutenant, one patrol sergeant, nine to 12 deputies on any shift. Then the Alpha shift, Alpha shift is one patrol lieutenant, one patrol sergeant, nine to 12 deputies on a shift. We have one criminal investigations detective, we have one sergeant and eight detectives. We have a crime suppression team detectives of one sergeant and five detectives. Neighborhood response team detectives, we have two. The homeless outreach team, traffic unit has one sergeant plus three deputies. Homeless outreach team has three deputies, three deputies, and also the ones that are working on traffic enforcement. We also have the school resource deputies and community service aides that includes one sergeant, three school resource deputies, and five community service aides. This is, I know that this is a meeting that Commissioner Lawland and I had, but being able to let our residents know that not only do we have a truly responsive and knowledgeable and proactive police team, that on any given day, you know how very well-covered we are here in our city. And I wanted to make sure, Commissioner Lawland, was that more or less what you wanted to find out?
I'm sorry, yeah.
Yeah. Perfect. On May 12, we met with our state representative, Hillary Cassell, who's been a true champion for us in Tallahassee. The representative came to City Hall and wanted our input and clear information about any budgetary concerns. As there has been discussion, I know Eve has been really filling you in on the discussions in Tallahassee, the studies about whether or not they're going to be reducing or eliminating property taxes, and we wanted to make sure that she had all the facts. And also for our residents and our community to know, we have not raised property taxes in 14 years. The last time was 2011. Our fiscal year ad valorem taxes yield approximately $40 million a year. So, imagine losing $40 million. We cannot lose $40 million without losing public safety, losing what we've done in storm drainage and Parks and Recreation, and everything that is about the priorities of this commission, which is benefits and services to our community. So, we gave her all the information and also let her know that between BSO law enforcement and BSO fire safety, that's a total of $37 million. So, imagine out of the $40 million that we get for ad valorem, $37 million goes into public safety for our BSO police officers and fire. So, I think that once, you know, our state representative brings all this information and meets with the Speaker of the House, and people truly know consequences. But it's also very good that cities are being checked because, just like us, whether it's coming from the feds or from the county or from the state, they want to see our books. We're proud to show them our impeccable audits. We're proud to show them how we run our city. And everything that we're doing here and on the dais from this commission is to pass legislation to really set us to be the leaders for not just Broward, for the entire state. But it was very, very interesting to meet with her, and she's taking all this information back up with her. On the afternoon of May 19, I was in communication with Francisco Rojo because I know you all don't just want to do a groundbreaking or a ribbon cutting. You want to find out, you know, how many more residents have moved in? Are we facing any challenges? Give us some information. So, it was very exciting to know that as of my communication with him last week, 92 of the 99 units were already leased, and the other seven were under contract. So, out of those 99 units, we're going to have approximately 200 new residents, and we got to meet so many of them, and what a great project. So, what we're doing with Parks and Recreation, and I'm working with Candido via the CRA, is to really look at all the properties that we have and be able to give you a comprehensive report. So, we can have a little workshop, and you guys can say, you know, this is too small. These 10 can be parks, and maybe these eight we could, you know, dedicate to workforce housing, and maybe these three, we could do that. But we don't want to just hold on to little pieces of land and not have a game plan. We want to have a game plan, and having partners like Francisco or the Joel Milton Group that are willing to think outside the box because partnerships are so important. So, they're ready to step up to the table, so we're very excited about that. The progress of CW Thomas Park continues daily. Mayor, I can't wait for you to do the Mayor on the Move. I know that you're going to do the Southeast Drainage Project, but every time I go by CW Thomas Park, I get extremely, extremely excited. I was talking to Cassie earlier today. Everything from the electrical conduits installed at 80%, the playground installation is complete, we're adding some more elements now with the swing. But when you see the glass and you see the drywall and you see the vision of the city's first-ever master plan for Parks and Rec, we didn't have a Parks and Rec master plan, just like we didn't have a strategic master plan. And not only do we have an adopted strategic master plan for parks, but now you guys can check off your list, ground breakings, ribbon counting. And really, when we're all out of here, that's part of our legacy, the things that we said we were going to do and the things that we delivered. So, we're on target to complete this in December. We're giving ourselves an extra month to January, but please go check it out. And Mayor, Mayor on the Move, it's just going to be fantastic because there's been so much advancement. All three of our parks' summer campers sold out. That's amazing. But that doesn't happen without people like Cassie and Frankie and Anthony. Like I said, back in 2019, we had one certified parks professional. Now, we have six. We never thought that people would pay to have their kids enrolled in our summer camp. Today, I just found out that every single one of our camps, everybody has paid. There was one camp that six kids needed some help. This is a camp that five years ago, no one paid. And parents are extremely happy, and we couldn't have done this without your support because that allows us to hire and promote and train and retain great employees. But to have all these camps sold out, including our lifeguard camp and our team camp is going to be sold out too, is truly remarkable and a testament to this entire team effort. On May 21, I had a conference call with Luis Mata from the Joel Milton team. Luis updated me on the progress of the Gulfstream Road Drainage Project. Again, our partnership with the Joel Milton Group, saving the city in excess of $300,000. These are not just people that are coming and developing a building. These are people that are invested in our community. They're not turning over that project like Francisco Rojo here doesn't turn over that project. It's been amazing. And the Gulfstream Drainage Project is going to be a game changer for all the people that live and traverse through that street. So, we're very, very excited about that. And it's about 70% complete, so I will bring you more information as I get it. Included here is also just a synopsis of some of the highlights from other department directors. And again, we're just super excited about presenting our budget. I had a really detailed meeting today with Jamie, our finance director. We're very close to bringing in a deputy finance director as well. And that's only because we are an attractive place to come, not just live, but also to work. So, thank you very much, and this concludes my report.
Thank you, City Manager. City Attorney?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. I'm just two small points. Thanks to the efforts of the Vice Mayor, we're at the last steps of getting the new park at 90, between 90 and 100 Bryant Road. That's the WAVE Project. If you recall, part of the site plan was to have a park there, and thanks to his efforts, the county is, we're waiting on the last step of the county to approve that. And one last thing, I did hire, or I don't think you call it hire. I did get an intern who will be starting June 10. Actually, the Vice Mayor also introduced me to her, Olivia. She actually works part-time at the Lucky Fish.
I met her.
Very nice girl with a great GPA, and she may be coming forward with some proposed legislation at the state level, but looking for your support. We're going to try and figure out how to package it and write the language because she did a whole project on the state law of Florida and how it, our labor laws facilitate or make it easier to traffic in sexual trafficking, and so proposing changes to the labor laws to prevent that.
Wonderful. She's a very nice young lady. I look forward to having her here during the summer. Thank you, Eve. Thank you, Vice Mayor. All right, City Clerk. City Clerk reminders.
Thank you, Mayor. So, your next meeting for CRA is June 10 at 6:00 PM. And then following that meeting, you have your regular meeting at 7:00 PM. And then your next City Commission meeting is June 24 at 7:00 PM. Let's hold on, Mayor.
Thank you so much, City Clerk. And up next, we have Item 6, which is our public safety reports. And we will have our very own Captain Jason Turala. Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Attorney, City Manager, City Clerk. Good evening. So, we've had a very, very, very busy last couple of weeks. And again, this is just a little snippet, a couple of good arrests we've made. Our deputies continue to do proactive checks over at the 7-Eleven off a federal highway because we continue to get complaints over there. Our deputies observed the individual that they previously trespassed from that property last week. Upon making contact with him, they placed him in custody for trespassing on the property. And search instance arrest, they frowned crack cocaine on his possession. Again, that seems like maybe a small arrest, but when we're getting continued complaints at the 7-Eleven, those quality of life arrests really make a big deal in cleaning up that area. Also, earlier this week, we had a, we responded over to the Publix out west off of 31st and West Griffin, reference to a theft that just occurred and where the individual resisted other recovery efforts of the Publix employee. The subject ran from the Publix and ran towards the Estates of Fort Lauderdale, jumped into the unoccupied, closed clubhouse over at the Estates of Fort Lauderdale while we were chasing him, and then also made his way onto the roof of the structure. Our deputies, with the assistance of their helicopter, were able to track the subject, and we were able to safely get him off the roof and place him in custody. The individual was charged with burglary to the clubhouse over at the Estates, as well as felony theft from the Publix and obstruction on us. And we were able to recover the stolen items from the Publix. And last but not least, another really good arrest over at 801 East Dania Beach Boulevard this week. Over at the construction site, we received a call early in the morning hours, about 12:45 AM, that an individual saw a white male wearing a construction, orange construction vest, walking through the property. The individual... The individual thought that was weird. Obviously, at twelve forty-five, in the wood, he should be there on the property. Upon arrival, our deputies immediately set up a perimeter. We locked the individual in, we had the helicopter respond. And the helicopter and our deputies observed a male walking through the property with a crowbar, wearing a vest. We were able to get inside the property, we were able to detain him before he could flee. And through our investigation, we discovered that he was on the property illegally. Obviously, he was wearing a construction vest to make it look like he was a worker, which he wasn't. And he was actually on the property with the crowbar, breaking into trailers on that property to steal equipment. So luckily, because of this witness and good police work, we were able to get that individual in custody, and charge him for the burglary to the construction site. Last but not least, we had a very successful Memorial Day weekend. We had the deputies at our beach for the entire weekend. I can happily say we had zero issues on our beach, anything for law enforcement. It was very crowded, but zero issues. And also Dana Point was very busy. We had our continuing Dana Point operational plan, and Friday, Saturday night, it was very busy, but zero issues to report again for Dana Point. So another successful holiday weekend for, for our residents, for our city, and from a law enforcement standpoint. And last but not least, we'll begin planning for Fourth of July. Even though we don't have a fireworks show in our city, every year, obviously, you know, the city of Hollywood has a very big Fourth of July fireworks show. And their traffic, when they leave the event, always impacts our residents in our city. So I already spoke to Chief Devlin from Hollywood P D. As soon as they begin their planning next week, he will invite me and my team. And as we do every year, we'll meet with him, and we'll come up with a traffic plan to push all the traffic through our city Fourth of July night at the conclusion of their event. So that'll be handled. And that is the conclusion of, of my report.
Excellent report, Chief, thank you so much. We appreciate all the hard work you're doing, and thank you for keeping us safe, especially over these holiday weekends.
Yes, ma'am.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you.
Up next, we have, oh, sorry.
Jump in the gun.
I'm ready.
Hey, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Two questions, one, does the construction site have security?
They do not, they do not. So this was actually a witness who saw this, and a very, very, very smart person, you know, said this is not right, and they called us.
See something, say something, right?
Absolutely, a hundred percent.
And then the other question, Fourth of July, do they close the Dana Beach Bridge?
They do not close the Dana Beach Bridge when they leave. But Hollywood Boulevard pushes their traffic on always A-one-A to Dana Beach Boulevard, and then Dana Beach Boulevard westbound. So we deal with a vast majority of the traffic leaving the event. So we position our deputies up and down Dana Beach Boulevard, Federal Highway, and Dana Beach Boulevard. And then obviously Sterling and Griffin and Federal Highway will work with the airport as well, and will push everybody out towards ninety-five.
Okay, so Sheridan Bridge closes, but our stuff.
Exactly, that's the problem.
So how, do we have a plan on how we're going to help our restaurants on the beach during that?
It's open, the beach is open, everything's open.
But is the traffic going to be a concern at all, or?
No, no, because the beach is open, our, our beach doesn't really get affected by the traffic as far as the cars can still come in and go. It doesn't affect anything coming into the beach. The traffic is still okay to get in there, we've never had an issue.
So that's not going to be a location where people fleet, go to, to be able to see fireworks?
No, we've never had an issue with it being, since I've been here as the XO and the captain, we've never had a problem with our beach, I think it's far enough away
Okay.
from the fireworks show that they don't come to our beach to see the show.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner, thank you, Chief again. And up next, we have our very own BSO Fire Chief Sergio Pelizer. He did do a good job, didn't he?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Staff, and the great citizens of Dana Beach. So last month, April first through the thirtieth, our units ran six hundred and twenty total calls. Of those calls, one hundred and thirty-three were fire-related, and four hundred and eighty-seven were medical-related. On May sixth, our Life Safety Educator had a class here for all our staff, the city staff, doing Stop the Bleed. And then on May eighth, we had another class, the Heat Stroke Awareness. So what, Heat Stroke Awareness brings me to a point where we need to start thinking as a community, all, and this is a message to the citizens and everybody out there. It's getting hotter and hotter every summer. You're just, you know, walking out there, I broke a sweat from the fire station over here, so I couldn't even imagine being out there more than five minutes. Please, take care of yourself, take care of your vulnerable population, you know, your grandparents, your children. Try to avoid prolonged time in the heat. If you feel like you're getting overheated, go inside, get into a cool place. So please, take care of that. And the one thing I could tell you, and I know somebody might not say something here, but it's hurricane season coming up June first. So I want to thank Nanette, she came up with a flyer that's going to be posted on our website, Alert Dana Beach. Basically, the gist of it is make sure you have a plan, so citizens out there, please have a plan, build a kit, and stay informed. And that's my message for tonight, and hopefully we have a nice, quiet season here in Dana Beach.
Yes, let's, let's pray to that, and thank you, Chief. It is by eight o'clock in the morning, it is, it's blazing. So I, I can't imagine that it's still May and what the summer is going to be like. So thank you for that Heat Stroke Awareness, we really do need to make sure that everyone stays safe, appreciate it. More questions, more questions. All right, thank you, Chief. And then next, we have our citizens' comments. And we have our very own Ms. Christine Douglas, if you would come up and state your name and address for the record, please. Yes, very happily so.
Good evening, great people. Christine Douglas, forty-six, sixty-five, Southwest Thirty-eighth Terrace, Dana Beach, Florida. Okay, I am here tonight, not a complaint, but I happily that I was after safety, because I want to talk about safety on Griffin Road. I heard our mayor talk about two hundred more units being built in Florida, which, in Dana, which growth is great, I know it's important, and we can't avoid it. Two hundred units is four hundred more cars.
It's the ninety-nine units here, which the, the average is about two people per unit. It's, so it's two hundred residents, but it's the ninety-nine units back here.
Okay, on Four Forty-One and Griffin, there's two more big buildings that are being built. That's probably going to have two more cars per unit. And on Griffin Road, there's nowhere you can make a U-turn safely heading east on Griffin. I live in Davis Isles on Thirty-eighth and Griffin. My mother is not comfortable coming to my house because she cannot get in and out of our neighborhood. Sunday, we had a cookout, and in order for her to leave our house, she has to go west to the light on Griffin and Fortyth to make a U-turn, because she cannot make a left turn going east on Griffin, because the traffic is just so heavy. So when she was making a right turn heading west, a person was making a U-turn, almost hit her, because they were making a U-turn, and the car, she slowed down, and the car that was heading westbound almost hit her. And they were laying on their horns. So I'm talking about safety, because if we, if somehow, I know it's Department of Transportation, if they can somehow get lights, not additional lights, but an arrow, like at Thirty-Fifth, where you can go to Thirty-Fifth heading east and make a safe U-turn, because you have an arrow, like you do at Griffin and Fortyth. It just makes sense, there's no area on Griffin Road heading east where you can make a safe U-turn without traffic coming in your direction. Because even if the lights are synchronized, where you have that gap, you don't have a gap, because as soon as the light turns green, people take off, so you don't have that gap in between red lights, where you can get in and out of neighborhoods, or grocery stores, or restaurants. And Aqua Isles used to be a mobile home park, and then they built that into a nice community. But I've listened to planning and zoning. I don't understand why they never put a, a street going from Fortyth into that neighborhood, because everybody who lives in that neighborhood has to make a U-turn at my, at our street. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Christine, you, you did make some valid points there. And I do think, I know, I believe it is owned by F dot City Manager, but we do have relationships with them. And so I, I do thank you for bringing up those safety concerns, because it is our, our priority. City Manager?
Yes, Madam Mayor, not only was I writing down all this information, Chrissy, but I, I know that, that our Deputy Director of Public Services and our City Engineer was taking those notes. That has happened to me, where I have left, like Dana Cove Park, and I have to go west, you know, pretty long ways to find myself comfortable, to be able to return back east. So we can have them, Sean, we can reach out to FDOT to really assess the westbound traffic on, on, on Griffin, and particularly areas where people can, can make a left turn, or a clean U-turn to be able to come back east again. And thank you, Cassie, for bringing this to our attention.
Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Chrissy, for bringing that to our attention. We did say the squeaky wheel, will just keep being the squeaky wheel. Thank you so much, oh, hold on. Commissioner Llewellyn?
Yes, I just, just through the mayor to the manager. Am I correct, and I don't know, perhaps Deputy Director can answer this as well. I know that the traffic lights are FDOT, but what about signs, like no U-turn sign, something like that?
If, if it's, why don't you come up, up, Sean, if it's our city, if it's our city street?
It's Griffin, so no.
Oh, no, Griffin.
No, I'm just, I'm just wondering, because I know we've done stuff like that before, I don't know if we worked with FDOT on it or whatnot, but sometimes, even on a temporary basis, if they can't get a light, because I know FDOT doesn't really want to put a light there, but if they could do something with just like a sign that tells people, don't make a U-turn, even if it doesn't deter everybody, it would deter some, I would think.
Okay, I'll, I'll reach out to FDOT about that. Currently, we have a similar situation on A-one-A going towards the beach. There aren't enough U-turns to turn around. So we are engaged in a, in a traffic analysis right now with our consultants to see how many U-turns we can actually have on that stretch of street. So I think something like this would be similar on Griffin Avenue, and I'll reach out to our consultants on this.
It's a major issue out there, so thank you.
Thank you, Sean, thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. And if there are no other questions, we will move on to the Item Eight, which is the Consent Agenda.
Madam Mayor, on the Consent Agenda, I just wanted to bring to your attention, under Items Eight Point Seven and Eight Point Eight, the memos as to the extended watershed master plan deadlines. There was a discrepancy between the resolution and the memos. So just wanted to clarify that it is an extension through December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, on both of those.
December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, for Eight Point Seven and Eight Point Eight.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Are there any other items, or any items that the Commission wishes to pull from the Consent Agenda? Do I have a motion, Vice Mayor Salvino?
Make a motion and pass Consent Agenda, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, do I have a second? Commissioner Ramoli? Have a second from Commissioner Ramoli, all in favor say aye. Aye, the Consent Agenda passes unanimously. Next, we are on to Item Nine, bids and requests for proposals. Eve, if you could please read Item Nine Point One.
Yes, Mayor, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Dana Beach, authorizing the I T B twenty-five dash nine, purchase of five prefabricated storage sheds to J C Enterprises in an amount not to exceed two hundred and fifteen thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars, providing for conflicts and an effective date, this is a public services item.
Thank you, Eve.
These are storage sheds that are air-conditioned, I believe we've discussed this with everyone, unless you have any questions.
Is it public services? No, we don't. All right, so we have no questions, Vice Mayor?
Make a motion and pass Nine Point One, Mayor.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ryan, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all right, Item Nine Point One passes unanimously. Item Nine Point Two, Eve, if you could please read that for us?
It's a resolution of the City Commission authorizing the ranking of consulting firms that responded to the R F Q twenty-five dash eight, Construction Engineering and Inspection Services for the Southeast Drainage Project Phase Two, and selecting Metric Engineering Inc. as the first-place firm. Providing for conflicts and effective date, this is a public services item. This is Phase Two of the project.
Phase Two, all right, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'll make a motion to approve Nine Point Two.
I have a motion from Commissioner Llewellyn, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ramoli, all in favor say aye. All right, Item Nine Point Two passes unanimously, thank you, Commission. And now we are on to Item Ten, quasi-judicial and public hearings, there are none. So we will move on to first reading ordinances, but Item Eleven Point One has been rescheduled for June tenth, twenty-twenty-five at seven P M.
We need a motion to postpone it to that meeting, and I just need to read the title.
But it, excuse me, can we continue it to the twenty-fourth?
Okay.
Please, thank you.
To June twenty-fourth, do I have a motion to continue Item Eleven Point One to June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five?
Can I read the title?
Oh, go ahead, read the title.
Sorry. An ordinance of the City Commission amending Chapter Twenty-eight L D C at Part Two, Site Development Regulations, Article Two-Sixty-five, Off-Street Parking Requirements. At Two-Six-Five-Fifty, off-street parking required, on-street parking credit. In order to reduce the required parking for hotels in the CRA-form-based zoning district, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, Eve, all right, do I have a motion?
I have mine on, you already turned mine on.
Oh, I had, from Commissioner Ramoli had his on, okay, Commissioner Llewellyn?
I'll make a motion to continue Item Eleven Point One to June twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-five at the seven P M meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn, Commissioner Ramoli.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Ramoli, all in favor say aye. All right, Item Eleven Point One is, will be rescheduled for June tenth, June twenty-fourth. Next up, we have Item Eleven Point Two, Eve, if you would please read Item Eleven Point Two.
Yes, ma'am, an ordinance of the City Commission authorizing the expenditure of city funds exceeding one million dollars to fund the Southeast Drainage retrofit project Phase Two, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date, public services item. And this is to start the funding ruling.
Thank you, Eve, Vice Mayor Salvino?
Make a motion and pass Eleven Point Two.
Actually, this is a public hearing on this one.
This is a public hearing, does anyone wish to speak for or against this item?
Don't see nobody.
Seeing none. Vice Mayor Salvino?
Make a motion and pass Eleven Point Two, Mayor.
I have a motion from Vice Mayor Salvino, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Llewellyn, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, Item Eleven Point Two passes unanimously. And we are on now to second reading ordinances, Item Twelve Point One, oh, Item Twelve Point One. Rescheduled to June tenth, twenty-twenty-five, Eve, if you would like to read that title.
Thank you, an ordinance of the City Commission to amend Chapter Twenty-eight L D C, Part Five, signage and design regulations, Article Five-O-Five sign regulations. At Section Five-O-Five Forty, detailed sign standards to modify wall sign regulations, amending Section Five-O-Five Fifty prohibited signs to modify sign placement, amending Section Five-O-Five Ninety, sign regulations for the mixed-use CRA-form-based zoning district, to authorize portable signs for all businesses, and to modify wall sign regulations, amending Five-O-Five One Ten, sign regulations for shopping centers in large retail establishments in the commercial districts and PUDs, relating to projecting signs, repealing Section Five-O-Five One Forty, which entitled sign exempt from certificate of compliance requirement, and to substantially revise Section Five-O-Five One Ninety, signage review to remove the approval process and fees, providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you, Eve, do I have a motion to reschedule this item to June tenth, twenty-twenty-five at seven P M?
I'd make a motion, pass Item Twelve Point One, and move the item to June tenth at seven P M. To continue this.
Let's be clear, it is to continue, not to pass, thank you, Vice Mayor, do I have a second?
I'll have a second to continue it to June tenth.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, so Item Twelve Point One will be rescheduled to June tenth, twenty-twenty-five at seven- All right, so item 12 point one will be rescheduled to June 10th, 2025 at 7:00 p.m. On to item 12 point two. Eve, if you could please read item 12 point two.
Yes, ma'am. An ordinance of the City Commission to amend Chapter 28, LDC, to Clean Up Language Relating to Accessory Structures, Part One, Use Regulations, Article 105, Use Regulations for Residential and Open Space Zoning Districts, Section 10540, Townhouses, in Order to Calculate Previous Area, Amending Part Two, Site Development Regulations, Article 230, Special Floor Area Building Dimensions and Building Site Standards, at Section 230-40, Minimum Floor Area for Dwellings and Lodging Units, to Address Minimum Floor Area and Accessory Structures, Amending Part Three, Special Zoning District, Part One, Community CRA, Form-Based Zoning District, Article 309, Additional Development Standards, at Section 309, 10 Complete Streets Improvements, to Modify the Building Line and Clarity References to the CRA and City, Amending Article 310 Building Types, at Section 31010 Residential Building Types, to Make Porches Optional, Amending Article 311 Frontage Types, at Section 31120, Frontage Type Definitions and Standards, to Modify Porch, Stoop, Door yard, Shop, and Forecourt Frontages, Amending Part Seven, Code Administration, 725, Definitions, 72530, Terms Defined, to Define Principal and Accessory Dwelling Units, in Providing for Codification, Severability, and an Effective Date. This is a Community Development Item.
All right.
This is a text amendment to several different areas, but it is second reading. I believe the presentation was made at first, but I'm available if you have any questions.
Any questions from the Commission? This is a public hearing. Does anyone wish to speak for or against this item? Seeing none. Do I have a motion? Vice Mayor?
Make a motion and pass item 12 point two.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Ramoli. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item 12 point two passes unanimously. Thank you, Commission. All right, item 13, we have no discussion and possible action items. Uh, item 14, we have no appointments for this agenda. And item 15, I believe is the addendum, so a discussion on the Solid Waste Authority and Master Plan by Commissioner Ryan.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, yeah, I discussed this with Eve. We've been doing a lot of work at the Solid Waste Authority, that's for sure. I think we've met twice a month for like the last two years. Uh, well, sometimes twice a month, and it's a lot. Uh, so what I thought would be the best practice would, just to provide all the materials, it's on the Solid Waste website, but I gave it all to Eve to send to you guys so you could go over the master plan. And, you know, you could submit any comments, because I, I just want to submit the comments as a whole from our city to the Executive Board. Therefore, the consultants and the Executive Director can review our comments as a city. We can compare notes to other cities on what they want to do. Right now, what they came up with the drafted master plan is they don't have any incinerator, any WTEs, it's called Waste Energy Facilities, they don't have any of those in the future. Which, I think the, there was consensus on the Executive Committee that we definitely would need another boiler at an existing facility or to create a new WTE facility. WTE is the most expensive way to handle trash, but with the new technologies, it's really the most efficient way. What they suggest on the master plan is a new landfill and to eventually train, well, to train the garbage out of the county uh, up to a, another site, you know, Waste Management owns a lot of sites in, in the middle of the state. Uh, I, what I was proposing, and as the Executive Board was proposing, it was, you know, rail, that would be a future use to, to get rid of, rid of our waste. But right now, we're, we're trying to create a short-term, midterm, long-term plan. And what I believe the short-term plan is to review existing facilities, see where a new boiler would be, um, you know, the most feasible, you know, we have to decide how we're going to pay for it. And landfilling basically is the last possible thing you want to do, is just throw, throw the garbage away. There's, there's more ways to redo, reuse it, reuse it, recycle it. Um, we've gone over everything from recycling plastics to, to glass. The county has plans ready also. And the biggest thing I want our city to look at is the county has future proposed sites for recycling facilities or processing facilities, whatnot. And if you look at the map, when, when you see the master plan, all, most, 90% of the sites are pretty much in Dania Beach, uh, just west of our airport. And there's, there's really nothing out west, which is, it's kind of funny to me. Uh, but, but that's just what the county owns and how it's zoned. So what we did is we sent it back for them to review it again on potential sites in the area. And, you know, we're, we're not trying to be, we're not trying to have NIMBYism in Dania Beach. We are the county's first city. We understand waste is an issue. And we're willing to be good partners where some people kind of are a little more push, standoffish when it comes to that. But I, I feel like we're more realistic when it comes to the problem. I, I feel like the Commission as a whole agrees to it also. So, yeah, just schedule one-on-ones with Eve and, and Public Services. And if you have any comments you want to submit, we could submit them as a whole to the Solid Waste Authority. But I definitely wanted to keep you guys up to date on that. Uh, it's drafted master plan now, and eventually we have to have a master plan to submit to the county. And hopefully the city's adopted, it has to be majority of the cities that adopted. It's a lot of work, but we, we need to have some more teeth to it, and, and that's really what we're trying to do. This is the most important part right now, so I thought this is very important to bring this up to you guys. I tried to get the Executive Director in, but he was out of town for vacation. Uh, I know he's been working like a dog, so I'm going to try and get him in maybe in one of our meetings in June just to give us a, do a much better job of what I just did to you guys, so.
You did a good job.
Yeah, 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 so I, it's very important that you guys stay on top of that, especially when it comes to the land in our city. And I asked them, I said, well, is, is Dania owning land next to this county land? You know, that, that's how we try to work with them and see what we can do. But, uh, yeah, it's just definitely something to look at. It's very important for the future. 10, 20, 30, 40 years off, so thank you for giving me that time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan. I, I do appreciate you giving us that thorough update. And I do like that you want us to have a collective, um, you know, feedback from the Commission. Do you have a better suggestion? I mean, we can meet individually, one-on-one with Eve, but then just to make sure that everybody's in agreement so that we're singing with one voice? Or should we wait until after?
Yeah, yeah, I think you were gonna do it. Title come in.
Yeah, the manager has a good idea that to have Public Services involved. I did send as part of the package all of the comments that Public Services had, so you have that as well. And, um, I had some comments that I had provided to the Commissioner, which I can also provide to you.
Excellent.
Yeah, it, it's questions too. It doesn't have to be like telling them what to do. It, it could be, well, how much is this going to be? What's the future implications of this?
Okay, great.
Thank you, uh, again, Commissioner Ryan. And we will move on, look at this, to Commission comments, and we will start with Commissioner Llewellyn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just to piggyback on that, um, I have noticed, because the majority of the county land is Dania Beach or close to it, yes, because we had the same issue with the homeless situation as well, and they were looking at the, the, yeah, the county was looking at that. That was private land, but the, but the county bought it as part of a settlement because of the, the issues with the flooding there, which I have brought to all of the Commissioners' attentions. Um, so that they are aware that that's not, really not a good location for something like that. Um, and again, not NIMBYism, but it's realistic, and you don't want to be on the news for the wrong reasons, so. Anyway, but I appreciate the, that update because I, we know there's a big issue going on in Miami-Dade right now with incinerators and whatnot, and we don't want to have the same problems here. Um, thank you for that. Um, I wanted to just touch on something real quick with the summer camps that the manager had mentioned. As you, I'm sure you all know, in the consent agenda, there was, I was using some of my discretionary funds towards the summer camps. That was to fill in the gaps of those remaining children who don't have the funds to be able to, um, attend the summer camps in their Dania Beach residence. And I am really happy that there's so few this year, because in the past, there have been a lot more. And I am hopeful that someday, maybe next year, there won't be any who can't afford to pay. So that would be great, but if there are, that's part of what our investment is all about, is in our children. I, I want to say kudos also to our Communications Department. There was a post that they did just recently, um, that promoted our teen program on Friday nights by encouraging parents to have a night out and, and they could bring their teens to, um, one of the parks to engage in this, um, program. Um, and it's not just teens, I think it's younger children too, but it's, yeah. But it was, that was really good, very smart. I saw it and I immediately shared it because I thought it was a really good way to get the point across that this is a program that's available, and if you want a night out, have a date night, you can do that, because we, we can take care of your kids. So, um, anyway, and I know you appreciate that probably. Anyway, I thought it was, I thought it was very good, and I, I want to applaud them for coming up with that. Attended a lot of events over the last couple of weeks, including the award ceremony with the Broward County Public Schools, which most of us were at. And I'll tell you what, there were a lot of schools, or I mean, a lot of, um, cities who applied for that, and we were the ones who got it. And it, it, it was very clear, apparently, that we were going to get that award, and that was also a good thing to, to bring up and bring to the attention, um, so that we could make sure we took care of that. They put on a very nice program. Using, utilizing all of the different schools and kids from the different schools, the bands from the different schools, some giving speeches, some answering questions, some, um, engaging, some just playing music or dancing or that sort of thing. But it was a really good program overall with what they did. And it really highlighted how good, a lot of these school, really, they're really very good schools. And I know people like to say negative things about public schools, but I'll tell you what, I was very impressed with some of these kids, and I, I, I think we all were. It was, especially the, the pre-law kids, that, they did this whole thing, it was a whole question and answer thing, and they had, they were very, very astute. It was very impressive. And then we also went to the Collins Elementary Awards for the students, which this is, I think this is the fourth or fifth time I've gone to that. And, um, they always do the most improved students as well as the highest achieving. And it's always good to see how excited the parents are as well as the, as the students. And they also had a young man who received a special award. He's actually, um, he's going to Olson next year, and he actually can apply for like a child's version of Mensa because he is so bright, and he was very, yeah, ridiculously bright. But again, really impressive overall. They did a nice job with the program, and, um, that's about it. And I hope everybody had a nice Memorial Day, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Llewellyn. Uh, Commissioner Ramoli?
Okay, I'll try to make it really, really short, Vice Mayor. Again, uh, last week was busy, especially the 22nd, um, and like, um, Commissioner Llewellyn said, I was at the, um, Fourth Annual State of the Region Awards. It was really a nice, um, nice event representing our city, along with all of our colleagues who were able to be there. Uh, it was really nice. Then we went off to, I believe it was the Broward MPO's Fourth, um, Annual State of the Region Awards. And the only reason I'm bringing that up is because everybody I spoke to there had some incredible things to say about our city. It was just, God, it's a great city. You guys are doing a lot of good things, and it's really cool to be able to go to these awards. And it's not focused on us, but everyone who you talk to says all these great things about what we're doing here. So, um, that's a testament to everybody here. Then, um, I believe, uh, we were at Collins, the Collins Elementary, um, Awards, um, I T Parker, again, it was a beautiful award. Those kids were amazing and, um, some really, um, it's fun, like, uh, Commissioner Llewellyn said, to see the parents and how excited they get when their children go up for the awards. And that, as a matter of fact, I think they're more excited than the kids are, which is really interesting. And, uh, then the, the next day, I was, um, uh, able to attend the Dania Beach Elementary Volunteer Awards with Commissioner Ryan, and I thought that was amazing. We had a couple of performances from the kids there and all the volunteers that, that make, um, that school what it is. It is our oldest school, and I think the oldest school in Broward County, isn't it? It's 110 years old. And, um, those teachers just do an amazing job, but all those volunteers, they, they, they just do amazing work, and they love what they do. And there was a really cool story about a guy who is not even, I guess, a considered volunteer yet. They're still, I guess, going through that process. But he shows up every day, he brings his child, and he is out there making sure all the kids get in the school. And there are parents who drop their kids off to him, and basically, he takes these kids under his wing until school bell rings, so. And he doesn't need to do that. He's just a parent. But he does it, and he loves it, and, uh, it's just great to see people like that really, um, helping our children um, in, in school and volunteering their time. And that's all. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Ramoli. Appreciate that. And Commissioner Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, uh, last week was definitely exciting. It was, it was busy, but it was, uh, it was fulfilling. It was, it was great to see the city get some awards. Uh, that, that Broward County Public Schools Award that we got for the community partner, that, that's just a big testament to the whole entire city, city staff, city management, and, and our Commission. We really blitzed the, the school system. Like, we were all, they all know us on a first-name basis, I'll tell you that. We blitzed all of them, wrote letters, you know, City Manager, went to community meetings, a lot of things we didn't even have to go to, but we were just constantly seeing everybody, even, uh, you know, Commissioner James. And, uh, we did a, did a ton of work, and that was just like, it felt like a, a just an overall, really, a really city-community award of just pure effort. Like I said, that, that was like a blitz paying off, and it was, it was great, great to see that. And, uh, learning about the gold medal that we got, the regional gold medal for the mural, that's amazing. That's amazing. Uh, you know, I'll, you, it's all because of the alligator that I, I suggested. But, uh, yeah, no, that, that, that's, that's incredible, and I think that's going to just keep paying dividends for us, uh, down the line. And, yeah, the end of the school year, activities going on right now, and there's still more going on this week, they're great. And it, it's great to get out to our, our schools. It's not as easy in other cities, I understand, because they have schools all over the place. We only have three schools. So, uh, it's good that we have a presence, a little presence of each of us in all of those schools. Kids really like it, and, uh, they get to know us, and the teachers really appreciate it, the staff. It's just good to see, you know, it's, it's nice to be involved in the community. And yesterday was Memorial Day, uh, spent time in Post 209 and Post 304. I'd like to thank BSO for showing up to Post 304 for their event, and they blocked off the road for the raising of the flags. And it was a very nice event, very, uh, big turnout. And, uh, my condolences to Bobby Libero. He was a Legionnaire, he's a veteran. He passed away, and the American Legion had a celebration, um, for his life on Saturday as well. So there's a lot of events going on in the American Legion over the weekend. So condolences to the Liberos and great work team, great work city. Nice short meeting, good job, Mayor. Everybody have a good night.
Thank you, Commissioner Ryan, Vice Mayor Salvino.
I don't know, by the time they all get done talking, there's nothing left to say.
Pretty much.
Uh, just, um, just going back to what the City Manager had said about all the awards, it's just nice to be part of this team that, um, you have working for you that, um, gets all these accomplishments done for our city. It makes us proud, and I do brag on them all the time because it's something that, uh, a lot of cities don't have. And the compliments, like you say, that we get from all those other cities when the mayor was, Broward County was involved, you know, it's just, it's just a nice feeling. And, uh, Memorial Day was good. Uh, thank to all veterans, uh, for your services, and, um, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Salvino. And, yeah, we were pretty much all there together at all these events, so I don't need to necessarily go over everything. I will start with things that have not been said, uh, which is, uh, the Community Foundation of Broward. I had their inaugural Mayor's Forum, and that is, uh, they are a true foundation with like a $300 million budget. They are the ones who, um, along with FPL and the Business for the Arts Broward, have partnered with, um, the City of Dania Beach to bring the Love Mural. They brought all the mayor, all the mayors together because they wanted to see what are the needs of the city. So I was able to be first because our name starts with D and the C cities weren't there. And, um, and I was first, and they said, what, what, what do you need? And, and first of all, they, they, uh, put our mural on, on the screen, on their PowerPoint for saying how they wanted to partner with, uh, cities to bring more, they want to finish out the rest of their Love Murals, and Dania Beach was first on the list, and so we're their favorite mural. It's the best mural. But, uh, we were, we were, we were recognized in front of all of the municipal mayors. Um, Mayor Farr was there, and, and I was able to talk about how we partnered with Broward County, with, um, Francisco Rojo to bring, you know, some affordable housing, how we could think outside of the box and use a united way. So I would like to think about how we could work with the Community Foundation of Broward to not work in silos and not have these projects, like you were just talking about, City Manager. Um, when we look at these pieces of land, how can we partner with these kinds of foundations to bring more affordable housing, so it's not just coming from the city? So, um, we were able to be an example and kind of lead the way of how partnerships are really working to create these opportunities, um, for the City of Dania Beach, and then literally every city after may mention affordable housing, so it was good. every city after may mention affordable housing. So it was good. We really are shining, and a lot of people are taking notice of the City of Dana Beach. So I look forward to continuing those conversations. And let me remind, right now, I asked if we could have them on the July Agenda, the last meeting in July, the one and only, the one and only, and then July's done. And so I will, I'll be requesting that formally, to have that presentation from the Community Foundation of Broward here. I want to just, I'm very excited, you know, I love the art board and everything that, you know, we've accomplished. That doesn't happen without the Commission's approval, but I really want to thank Eleanor and Corinne and our Public Art Advisory Board. Those guys really do pour over eight-hundred-and-fifty pages of applications, and they whittle it down, so that we come and we make the vote at the end. But our Public Art Advisory Board does a lot of work. It's a lot of hard work that they go through to whittle down those, those final selections. And so I want to personally thank them for doing such a great job. We just had that same process this last time for the Creative Visions project. So I think we whittled it seventy-nine different applications for art pro, public art projects in the city, and we whittled it down to, I think, the final seven or eight that we have. And I think we're going to bring those down a little bit further, or we'll bring those final ones before the Commission, so that you can look at those. But our Art Advisory Board rocks, our team rocks, and we are bringing new awards, like we did for the Broward County Municipal Partner of the Year Award. So proud of this team for fighting, and it does take all of us to do that. I want to mention the Collins Elementary Award, because we had Miss Black Florida that was there in the keynote speaker, and she just did a wonderful job speaking to the children, empowering them. And the Patch got an award for being the Partner of the Year. We were Collins Elementary Partner last year, and we're their partner this year. So we will continue to look at getting those awards. And I also got an award from the Florida League of Cities for being in the Home Rule Hero Award for Legislative Action in Tallahassee. So we are, I don't really, but thank you, thank you, I do, thank you. I have sent it out for, to get published, but we're getting awards in every arena. We're looking at affordable housing, we're getting in education, we're getting in art, and we are really just a cohesive team that is working really, really well together, and our city is more vibrant than it ever has been. And so I am very excited to be a part of this team, and want to thank each and every one of you for working together to make our city shine. And with that, our meeting is adjourned. All right.